Like to please call to order the Board of Education meeting for Celine Area Schools for August ninth, 2022 at six thirty PM. If everyone could all please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy August, everybody, and a very, very warm welcome to our new Student Board of Education Representative, Allison Doran, who will be with us for the whole school year. So, and, and thank you for wanting to jump in and start early as we prepare to go back to school. And also, a very happy birthday to Vice President McFay. Today's the day.
Sweet sixteen.
Betty, do we have any forms for public comment? Okay, then I'm going to actually skip over that section, acknowledging no public comment forms have been turned in. And moving into the approval of the agenda, you may notice that we pulled up the action items before the scheduled reports tonight to be cognizant of guests speaking to possible questions that trustees may have. Steve and I have been talking about trying to accommodate the staff in, in long wait sometimes after scheduled reports because they have a lot to do, especially as we get back to, get back to school. So, we moved those forward just to kind of pull that to your attention. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Kirby.
Support.
Brad, thank you. Michael, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our first action item, I'd like to please entertain a motion to adopt the resolution from Trune Law Firm for the purpose of placing on the November eighth, 2022 ballot, consideration for the approval of a $180 million bond issued, reviewed and approved by the State of Michigan and authorized the Board Secretary to sign such documents as necessary. So moved, Miller.
Jenny, thank you.
Second.
Susan, thank you. Discussion? Any?
Well, I can just add that this is the language that will go on the ballot, approved by Trune, and, you know, it does list through all the information on it, and it does show that it's a seven point five mils, but we did check, and there's no method of saying this is a reduction from a previous, so it's just, this is the ballot language. It's important to know that.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Kirsty?
Okay, seeing none, move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. I'd like to next, please entertain a motion and move to approve the purchase of orchestra instruments from Char Products Company for the total cost of $24,921 and zero cents, the purchase of band instruments from Marshall Music for the total cost of $29,370 and zero cents, and the purchase of music stands and cart from Port Huron Music Center for the total cost of $2,352 and zero cents, as submitted by Matthew, Matthew Brier, Celine Area Schools Music Department Coordinator. These purchases will provide students in the Celine Area Schools with decades of musical education. So moved, Jones. Candace, thank you.
Support, Kirby.
Brad, thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question. Oh, so are these all replacement instruments, or are these going to be added to the existing repertoire of tools?
Yeah, it's a normal cycle of, at, at one point, especially if you look at these larger instruments become where we need to be replacing and updating, and this is part of that normal cycle. Students still with the smaller instruments, right, that they're, they're providing their own or, or working out of a payment plan with Char and other, and other music companies, but this is part of that normal cycle of, you know, replacing the larger instruments over time.
And, and to add to that, I believe the instruments go down to the, the younger grades as well, so the, the instruments that are being replaced, so it'll still be in use, so I thought that was good.
Right, that they'll continue to move, right, because what, a, a really great thing about our music program is all students start taking music in fifth grade every day, so that you're right, they need those at the lower levels too, and to just keep that cycle almost like, I won't say it's the equivalent of bus replacements, but, you know, it's, musical instruments wear out and we cycle them through so we can have a great music program.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Like to please entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Assistant Student Services Director Monica Ellis to appoint Daisy Sharman to fulfill a two-year term in the role of Celine Area Schools Representative for the WISD Parent Advisory Council.
Support.
Jenny, thank you.
I guess I'm making the motion not so.
You're making the motion.
I'm making the motion fully, and I think Daisy is a, is a great choice. I concur with, with, I guess, Assistant Superintendent, what is Monica, Assistant Student Services Director, but she's interim right now. Yes, but Monica, I can, I concur with that nomination. I think Daisy will be great.
Thank you. Support?
I support the motion.
Susan, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay.
Quick question, because does Daisy, sir, do you know, or does anyone know if Daisy Sharman has served this board?
I, I believe no.
But, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, moving to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to scheduled reports, K-12 Insight School Quality Survey results, Dr. Latch.
Okay, we're loading our presentation for this. As many of you recall, K-12 Insight is our survey company that we've been using for years, and this survey is the annual end-of-year school, well, it used to be called Climate, but it's now School Quality. And what we're trying to do with this is revamp the way we've, we've been seeking information from the public to make sure that it's relevant, not only to the building conditions, but also the environment, the climate in schools, our educational program, our equity inclusion efforts. So, we've really taken what previously was called the Climate Survey and have tried to make all the questions more relevant to the information we need to gather. And so, this report actually is, I guess I would say, a benchmarking year, really the first year that we're giving this type of school quality survey, and then we're going to continue to do that over the next, you know, sequence of each year moving forward so that we can try to get better in any of the areas that the, you know, whether it's the students, the staff, or the community are, are suggesting that we need improvement, and also look at the strengths and determine what we need to continue doing to, to build upon that. So, some of this is somewhat difficult to read, but I'll, I'll give you the gist of this. So, this, this first slide is just the overview of the research study, and it talks about how it's put together and how it's organized, and then when you go to the next slide, and I will say this, there, there was a formatting issue with K-12 Insight in putting this forward, requiring us to do a PDF, so that's why it's a little bit tricky. And I think I am going to have to jump over to, is there, by chance, the portable mic that we could use? Little, little too, too small. Okay, so Anna, can you scroll back to three to give me that whole effort? Okay, perfect. So, what K-12 Insight does after the survey is administered is they go and pull out the important insights that they've developed from looking at, you know, how people answered, and they also try to look at how the different groups of people are answering. So, you start off by saying overall school quality rating, excellent or good, and you see that, you know, ninety-two percent of the elementary students, that was in grades four and five, because we, we don't survey down lower than that, primarily because the survey company has told us over and over again that that's not statistically significant data when the kids are that young for the way in which they're trying to gather this information. And then, followed by eighty-nine percent of the parent and guardians, which we think is a really high number, and staff at ninety percent, and secondary students at seventy-four percent, and we're going to talk a little bit about how next year we need to make sure we're bolstering the number of secondary students that actually take the survey. But with that said, when we talk to K-12 Insight and we say, well, how does that compare to other districts around the nation, because they have many, many districts, they're, they feel like that's a really, overall, a really good rating for, for the district. And so, you're going to see different areas as we go through this that look lower than others, and you might say, wow, that particular area needs some work. Yes, for certain, but we do need to keep in perspective, the overall school quality is what we're looking here, and, and that's very high across the board. And then they went into some specifics about which types of, of groups within the academic support dimension, and we see some pretty high ratings there as well. You talk about participative groups within academic support, and we want kids to feel that we are challenging, and we want the community to feel that way as well, and believe that we are doing those things, and this supports that in, in many ways. Within student support dimension, you look at campus-based staff, ninety-three percent, eighty-nine percent of secondary students, eighty-seven percent of parents and guardians said that students have a staff member to go to with a school problem. And it does say, however few are parent guardians, at seventy-six percent, and secondary students at seventy percent said students had a staff member to go with a personal problem. However, I do want to point this out, that a while back, and I brought this up a number of times, we had a review, this was six or seven years ago, actually, where this question was asked to our high school staff and also asked to our students, and only forty, around forty percent of the students at the time said they had a trusted adult that they've identified that they could go to. So, this actually is very positive information, we feel, because we're comparing it to a question that was asked a while back, and now that is good news. Now, is it problematic that, you know, thirty percent of the students surveyed say they don't have a go-to person? Yes, and that's what we'll want to try to build on, but this information, we thought, is an important insight that we need to work on. Terms of safety and behavior dimension, it talks about twelve percent of guardians, parents and guardians, forty, fourteen percent of secondary said they don't know if their school is safe. That concerns us in that, okay, we want to make sure that we are, you know, everybody's understanding what our safety protocols are, making sure that students know they're being protected in this way and that way, and so that will be something that we'll be looking to build on too. District Operations got favorable ratings, this is a great one, technological resources high, saying ninety-five percent are feeling that, you know, that's a really high group saying excellent or good. Back, you know, ten years ago, that would not be the rating for our tech department. So, that, that's showing a real solid mark for technology, which I think is, which is excellent. And then this bottom part says the net promoter score is public confidence in the school district and can be connected to growth, and that this positive score indicates more people are promoting their school or district than detracting from it, which is, which is important too. That's actually a slide that happens later in the presentation. Okay, so if we can scroll to the next one. Okay, this is where we need to do a little bit of work as it relates to who's taking the survey. We feel strong about that this parent guardian number is a good response, very statistically significant, in that, you know, we did have one thousand one hundred and thirty-two parents and guardians take the survey out of six thousand. Now, would we want more? Yes, but this is, is a, is a good number according to K-12 Insight, and we know that Trustee Hayward has some background in this too. Campus-based staff, two twelve out of six sixty-five, that looks good. Our, our concern is what happened here with the secondary students. With twenty, two thousand eight hundred and three surveys delivered to our secondary students, only, you know, two hundred responding, that tells us that we need to do better next year in being very organized around the timing of the year when we do the survey, and also how we roll it out and provide time in school to take the survey. Now, it's, it's always going to be optional, but you're going to see that the elementary students in Heritage, out of six hundred and eighty-three, five sixty-seven took it, meaning there was a more coordinated effort during school to have the kids take the survey, or at least they were invited to take it and providing time. So, that is something that we know we need to make an adjustment for next year moving forward. Okay, if we go to the next one. Okay, so this is the overall school quality comparison by respondent type, and, you know, you get concerned when you have a lot of yellow and red over here saying fair or poor. These are pretty high overall ratings about how parents and guardians, campus-based staff, and students in grades four through five are feeling about the schools. Now, you know, do we look and say, okay, two hundred students at the high school and middle school level took the survey, and there is a greater percentage saying that we need to work on school quality? Yes, we definitely want to look into that, but another thing we need to do is make sure we have more, more respondents, which I think is going to be a key focus moving forward next year as well. Okay, let's go to the next one, please. Okay, I'll keep going a little bit further. Okay, so this is called dimension scores comparison by respondent type. So, there are these general buckets of questions that were asked, academic support, future focused skills, student support, social, emotional learning, school leadership, family involvement, and safety and behavior. And that's what I meant by revising the survey. We didn't used to have it set up in those buckets quite like this, but now we, we, we wanted to make sure that we were getting at a variety of different topics as it relates to what we were asking people, and we've separated in this way, feeling like these are really important areas that we're working on. Now, you notice that it doesn't say in particular an equity category, that doesn't mean that there aren't those questions embedded in this survey, however, we gave a separate survey this year about equity. So, we were trying to make sure that we're not always duplicating our efforts when we're asking questions to our students, families, and, and, and our teachers as well, and staff. So, if you look here, you're largely looking at these categories, and you're trying to look at outlying areas that you would want to address. So, one in particular that we are going to want to address is, okay, we've been talking about social, emotional learning, and our students, and again, a smaller number there at the secondary level said, you know, fifty-one percent are strongly agreeing or agreeing that we're doing a good job in that area. Yep, something to look at, but again, we got to make sure that we have a, a sample size that we feel is strong for, you know, how many people we actually have, the students that we have at the secondary level. But anyway, what we do is we then go through and look at these results as a teaching and learning team, a central admin team, and with our admin team as well, and we start talking about, well, why do we feel like this area is higher than that area? And we do want the public to know that we do pour over this data. I think sometimes people think that we give surveys and nothing happens with it. We, we spend time looking at this because we do want to improve, and our goal is to get better. We talk all the time about lifelong learning, and the district believes that not only about, for our students, but for our staff as well. Okay, so if we go to the next slide, this actually looks at just what the Heritage students said. And so, we'll look at this, and we're going to look at, we're going to look at a couple things here. We're going to say, okay, glad that we have a pretty strong showing of safety and behavior, but, you know, seventy percent talking about academic support, you know, we're going to dive into why do thirty percent feel that maybe we don't provide as much academic support as we would, we would want? And, you know, that includes things like, are they challenged in school? Are the topics relevant to them? Again, these are buckets of questions, but we're going to be looking at all that information as well. Okay, we'll go to the next one. And this identifies, if you scroll down just a touch, or the other way, just a little bit more so we can see the, the cat, there we go. So, this is parents and guardians, out of all the items that were asked, these were the highest ranking items. And it talks about agreement level. I'm not going to read through all of them, but one of them that we think is great is we talk a lot about how we want families involved, and this speaks to that with ninety-one percent, teachers having high learning standards and expectations for all students, parents and guardians saying that eighty-eight percent of the time, that's true, that's, that's, that's good. And so, we look at these and say, okay, we want to build on that information. And then we also go to the next one. So, now we say, well, what are the areas that they are most concerned about, our parent and guardian base? This is one that we've been talking about for a while, but the financial literacy piece. We've talked a little bit briefly that this is actually going to be a required course in high school in 2024, I believe. At any rate, this is not just Celine Area Schools, parents and guardians that share this concern, but it's really something across the state. So, we look at that, and then we also talk about social, emotional, behavioral support, individual need support that would be known more as differentiation and how we're helping with, meet the needs of all students, and then how we're enforcing discipline, and then finally, assessment report card feedback, accurately communicating what a student has mastered. How does that show? How do parents understand what that looks like? Now, you could say, well, well, how low ranking is this? I mean, you still had for this one eighty-two percent on the assessment report card that didn't report that there was a concern, but with that said, we still need to look at what areas are lowest and then determine why, and what are some improvements that we can make moving forward. Okay, so if we go to the next one. Okay, and so this is our staff, so that, that's the group reporting, so the highest ranking, consistent with the other group on high learning standards. We thought this was a good one, that school administrators are courteous when they have a concern as staff members. It shows that our administrative team is providing strong response to that. This is great, there's a teacher counselor, other staff member to who a student can go to for help with a school problem. Again, we, we spoke about, you know, seven, six or seven years ago, forty percent of the students reporting that they could, they have a person. This is our staff saying that they feel confident that the staff is available for our kids when they have specific concerns they want to go talk to, and that students are challenged with their work. And this is a, if they have a technology problem, again, I kind of think that speaks to our strong technology department and really making themselves available to not only our staff, but, but our students to help them too. Okay, if we go to the next one. Okay, now we look at some areas that are, when it says campus-based staff, that means anybody that is employed in the Celine Area Schools that took the survey. Okay, so they spoke about this, we saw this before, that enforcement of discipline and seeing maybe some inconsistency. They also mentioned financial literacy, some additional support in social, emotional behaviors. This one, demonstrating understandings of the complexities of culture and global issues, and also effective communication skills. We're talking about the importance of that as, as students are moving, you know, out of our high schools and moving into jobs, a communication piece is really important. So, these will be some areas that we analyze moving forward. Okay, if we go to the next one. Now, we're looking at students, and again, this is a smaller sample size, but these are some of the areas that they said were really ranked high, and that is, this is positive, and we say there's a teacher or counselor that they can go to with a school, with a problem, that's a strong number. Same thing with technology, wide variety of extracurricular activities being offered, a variety of academic courses we pride ourselves at, in particular, at the high school level on the, through all of this, still being able to offer students with so many different experiences, whether it's a CTE experience, AP courses, you know, health, PE, just, just the, the magnitude and the number of courses we feel is very strong, and, and we feel like that reflects that the students feel that way too. And then the high learning standards and expectations for students, that's great to see that. So, we go to the, the next part, this is lower ranking items. This is an important one that we need to look at, that, you know, although a sample size of around two hundred, fifty-one percent of the students are feeling like they do not always understand how lessons relate to life outside of school, and as we talk about the importance of, you know, being global learners, global leaders, our compass, that's going to be an important one that we continue to have, you know, our teaching staff address. We look at this as we talk a little bit, well, quite a bit about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that how students are treated fairly regardless of race, culture, religion, sexual orientation, gender, gender expression or disability, and a fairly high number don't agree that that's happening. Staff in my schools teach students how to care for themselves. This is sort of that social, emotional wellness piece, that that could be improved. The discipline being enforced failer, fairly, that kind of connects to some of the part about treating fairly regardless of their race and so forth, and then school-wide strategies that teach, model, and reinforce social, emotional skills outside of the classroom. So, these were some of the areas that we would want to look at to improve in. Okay, if we go to the next one. So, this is our last section here with students at, at the Heritage level, being able to speak highly to all these areas, feeling safe and knowing about security, putting forth my best effort, not allowing bullying to occur, talking to an adult if they need help with technology, and being treated with respect. That's all very positive information, and then if we go to the next slide, we look at some areas that we do want to look at. So, when this question about my schoolwork is challenging most of the time, thirty-three percent of the students, and there were a fair number that took this survey, said that wasn't the case, so we really want to do, we do want to look at that one. And if you recall, one of the first slides spoke about seventy percent saying that they were, you know, they supported everything that was happening in the academic environment. Well, this does speak that there's this thirty percent out there, at least at the Heritage level, that says that's something that we need to be looking at. Talking to adults about a personal problem, giving more feedback on how they're doing, responding quickly when a student is bullied, and giving real-life examples in class. But you can see that largely these students were ranking the school highly because these are still pretty strong numbers. I mean, ninety-one percent were saying that teachers were giving real-life examples in class. So, I do think we have to consider, you know, how many students were taking the survey, and, you know, you're, you're, you're sometimes picking for areas that need to be focused on when the vast majority is reporting, or reporting that, that things are going really well in the school. Okay, if we go to the next one, this is just looking at district operations. So, these are things that, you know, maintenance of school buildings, so we look and, and report this type of information back to Rex and his team, and, you know, you look at this, and, yep, the students are definitely more critical of these areas, they just are. But, but I think this really is positive that, you know, out of the pretty large percentage of parents and guardians that took the survey, their outward feeling about maintenance of our school buildings is very positive in ninety-one their outward feeling about maintenance of our school buildings is very positive, and 91%. So you got to look at, you know, who's, who's answering the questions and so forth. And some strong support in some of these other areas. You know, you look at this transportation piece, and you say, well, you know, why are some students feeling like that's not the case? There's no question that we're working on, and we talk to Rex about this all the time, that the ability to staff our, you know, our buses and have bus drivers is really challenging. Never been more challenging, not just in this district, but all districts. And a point of pride for Rex and his team is last year, we didn't, we weren't canceling any routes. This year, we're looking at that. Are, are we going to need to make some adjustment with routes because of the shortage of drivers? That is not improving, it's good, it's, we're, we're going the other way there. Despite, you know, Rex's, I'd say heroic efforts to make sure that we are really doing everything we can to hire bus drivers. So, you know, if you know people that can drive a bus, we, we need that support moving forward. Okay, if we look at the next slide, we're coming to the end here. So we go to the next one. Okay, this is that, we saw something at the very beginning about net promoter score. This is kind of looking at the whole thing about it, how likely you're going to recommend the school to a family or friend, and they break it down by this promoters, like giving the highest rating passive, passive, being more in the good to average area, and detractors being in this, you know, not going to be recommending at all. And so I did ask Amy Bull, she's our, our, our person who does surveys. I said, well, what, what does this mean? Is this, is this of high quality? She feels, she says yes. That this would be really strong results for this type of question. This is by school. And then if you go to the next slide, which is one of the last slides, this next one looks about, about identical, but it's district. And that's actually positive because you do want there to be this correlation between, you know, strong schools, and overall, you want people to have a sense that all the schools are strong, and that the overall recommendation to support the district is, is there. Okay, I think that is the end, let's go to the last slide, but I believe that's, yes. There we go. So that's, that's the conclusion of what we have. Now, there were, she actually had all sorts of different reports and slides. This is the snapshot that was put together to share with the Board of Education. So, questions about the survey data? Susan?
Oh, yes. So just a couple of questions. So I noticed that, I'm going to give an example. So the social, social, emotional, or whatever topic it may be, where the staff are like, yeah, we're doing super, like, you know, we're supporting the students. But then we get a response where the students are like, I totally don't feel supported. And so I'm just wondering how, I guess that's taken as far as how we can change perspectives of, you know, why we're working on this specifically, and that communication between the staff and the reasons why we may be focusing on a certain issue. So, so an example, another, I guess this goes into my next question. The wellness committee, for example, asked one of those questions, and it was, I believe just to the students of, do you have someone to go to? And so they were able to provide, you know, anonymous, or their email if they wanted to connect with someone. So that was great. So I guess that's a question about if we only had, like, that's a super small number with the sixth through 12th grade, if there's any sort of like mid-year assessments that we're looking at for those grades that we had a lack of response. So I don't know if you've thought about that, or if I'm missing something on?
Well, I think what we would do here is probably not a mid-year because we are trying to be sensitive about, you know, how much we're surveying students. But for certain, when we get to the next spring cycle, we're going to be, you know, more cons, more concerned about how do we make sure that students are having the opportunity to take it at school? Because we, I mean, in theory, we should have that number up to 75%, 75 to 80% of, of the students taking it. That would be ideal, because you just feel like we'll get a better picture of overall of what's happening there. So we're going to, we're going to really focus on that next spring. But in the interim, you're right, there is this question about why do sometimes the teaching staff, or just our staff in general, answer, you know, more supportive than what students are saying? And sometimes you're seeing that with the parents and guardians too, giving, I think the school maintenance one is a good example. Here's the students feeling like, well, you know, that they don't feel like the, the, the schools are up to par. But 91% of the parents do, like, that's a really strong number. And the parents are the ones that are entering the building and probably being critical because they have some lens of what it should look like based on other districts and others' communities. So I think there just sometimes is a disconnect on what students think and what the other adults think. And I do think it's something we need to look into because why is that? Why do, why is there a greater percentage of students that feel like their social, emotional needs aren't being met than, than the teaching staff? I can't answer that for certain, but I do think it's something that we, we should be exploring.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm concerned too about the SEL. I'm less concerned about the student, the disconnect with the maintenance of the building, so Rex. But I am concerned, I'm, I'm curious to hear, I mean, one of the questions really begs deeper digging, and it's the fact that both the staff and the students said as high as 35 and 39% that discipline was not fairly enforced. Do the administrators had, did they have any insight into that number? Because that seems pretty high, or there are a lot of people in the school with concerns?
Well, I will say this, we just got this data. I mean, the, the final reports just came through. So it will be something that we explore with them to look at. We do talk a lot about the need as we move into next year to reset some of the structures in the school. I mean, we were, you know, coming out of some of the ways in which we were trying to get kids back into the buildings through, through the COVID pandemic. And I, I get that it's not, it's not over, but we are trying to get back to a more, I guess I'd say, normal start of the school year. And one of the things we are trying to make sure that we are focused on is the structure of, of the school. And so that there is greater consistency with, you know, whether it's discipline or, you know, some of you are seeing on social media, the plan to move with a different cell phone policy. So I do think that will help as we move to, you know, more structure in the buildings as we get ready to start this year to potentially have more uniform enforcement of discipline and fairer.
I, I wasn't hoping for you to speculate at this early stage, but I'm, I, I'm glad it's on everyone's radar going forward. Thank you.
Kansas?
Okay. I want to underscore the point that Secretary East, Eaststep made, or, I'm calling you secretary, I'm so used to saying secretary. Trustee Eaststep, former Secretary Eaststep, made about the social, emotional piece because I think that's so important, and it was a theme throughout. So I'm glad to hear that you will be looking into that and exploring more because I think the students feeling like they're not supported, or a large majority of students feeling like they aren't supported is, is important to look at. One of the things that I thought would be helpful, and I wasn't sure if this survey did that, but for when they answered either fair or poor, was there an option by question to add a comment? Because I think it would be helpful, in addition to like a, a general comments at the end, to, to have it aligned to the question so that if there's specific feedback related to that safety and behavior or social, emotional, et cetera, they could enter that information. So maybe for further future iterations, I just think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, or potentially pulling out some of the questions that we're most concerned about and figuring out ways to get more commentary. Because that, that's not exactly how these are set up, to gather that additional feedback. But as we identify areas that we're more concerned about, or areas that we feel like we're doing, you know, great in, we do want to see more narrative feedback as to why. I think that's important.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask out of curiosity, how specifically concepts such as financial literacy would be included in a curriculum, especially in the high school level? Would it be incorporated in a different class? Would it be in Hornet Time, or would it just be a new class added to the curriculum?
Yeah, that actually has not been determined, but I do think that that's a good point when, you know, the Michigan Department of Education says the districts need to offer that. The question is, does that mean to every student in a certain way, embedded in math class as a separate class? Those will be all things that we will explore, because I think you're right. How we roll that out, does that mean it's going to influence all students? Or is it going to be an elective? So there'll be, there'll be, you know, discussion about how that plays out. Okay.
I was just going to mention that you had mentioned that this was a benchmark survey. So I, I know that we've learned a lot from this, and I think one of the key things that we're learning is how can we, how can we, or exploring is how can we get more student participation? So I want to just mention that I appreciate that it's a benchmark and look forward to seeing that improvement next year. I also think in hearing this report that it just echoes what we've heard from both, from anecdotally, from parents and students and staff, from a state and national research over the last year, that the three major concerns are academic, behavior, or discipline, and social, emotional. And so I appreciate that while we didn't have a high sample size of students, we had a pretty good sample size of teachers or staff and parents, and that we can, we can also have in the back of our minds that this is echoing what we're hearing nationally and statewide too. So a focus on SEL especially is going to then impact the academic achievement and behavior in classrooms, I believe, so.
One thing that I forgot to mention that's reminding me is that in me talking with Cara Davis about another survey that we did give earlier, which is the Equity Survey, there are some still consistent themes in this one, even with the smaller number of students. So it's not to try to act like the state is not important because it was only 200 secondary students. It, it still is important, and we need to dive into it, and we will.
Yeah, and that's just kind of what I was thinking, that it echoes what we've been hearing so we can continue on with the plans that support those, those areas. So I appreciate the work that people are doing to support students, especially in the area of SEL. I know that, that our classroom teachers and our guidance counselors and social workers are all really focused on improving the experiences and, you know, just overall experiences for our students.
I will add with that, that we've used some of our ESTR funding to bring in some, you know, behavior intervention specialists, and also a heritage counselor. So we are making some moves to make sure that we're addressing, addressing it. I know you had a question, right?
All right, yeah, there are a couple of things that have come up that are important to me. Number one, I'm glad to hear you talk about like survey fatigue, about making sure that when we're surveying, it's pointed and it's important that we, that people know the response rate is important because we only give surveys that are quote unquote important, right? So I'm happy to see about that. I was going to ask Allison about what she thinks with regards to high schoolers and improved like response rate. Do you think just administering during the school day is enough? Do you have other thoughts or ideas?
I think to some extent, if you start to force the students to take the results, I think inadvertently they might change because I think having it not be optional changes the way people respond. Because I think part of the reason why the results may look the way they do is that it was an optional survey taken at the end of the school year. And so I think if you're a student taking this, you're taking it because you have a very high or a very low opinion of the school and that you're using the survey as kind of a sounding board for that. And so I think it, it could be an option to explore, to present it during Hornet Time or a specific class, but I also don't know if it becomes required that it would have the same, I guess, validity.
Well then, for people that participate, I mean, I don't know.
Prizes.
Just, just a point of clarification.
Making a dinner with a trustee?
No, maybe not.
I'm kidding.
So Allison, great answer. But I just had a point of clarification. There, even if there was possible time allotted for secondary students to complete the survey, it would never be required, it would always be optional, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Even if we said, hey, we're allowing 30 minutes in Hornet Time for students to take this survey, we encourage you if you would like to participate, but it will never be required.
And then the last thing I want to ask about is this, you know, the 40% of students who said that they wanted to have more information about how to care for themselves via emotional health, physical health, and stress management. So I guess this is really like a teaching and learning team. But are we going to do some type of professional development and things that are targeted to our staff to provide those resources to our students? Because it appears to me like we need to provide those resources. We need to, to dedicate time to it.
This is where you end up sharing that information with our counseling staff, our social working staff, and brainstorming ways to, okay, this is being asked, what are the current ways that we, that we do that? And what are ways that we can bolster that? So it would be, you know, analyzed by the team, and then they would go out and determine who else needs to be involved in making decisions about how we could improve in that area, or explore more about that particular question. Trustee Hayward?
Sure, thanks. So since this is kind of where my professional background lies, I'd just like to take the opportunity to say that I, I think you've done a great job, and I'm glad that, you know, you, you really flagged up both the big methodological concern that I, I would have looking at this, which is that 7% response rate in secondary students, which we all know is bad and needs to be improved. And also the big kind of content takeaways from this, which are, you know, those, those areas of strength and those areas that the other trustees flagged up about, especially discipline and equity and social, emotional learning that are being brought up both by staff and by students. So, you know, just going back to the, the low response rate in the secondary student population, obviously, you know, we, we heard about the wellness survey a couple of months ago, and we did a lot better job at the high school level anyway of getting responses there because that Hornet Time was, was given to, to students to, to, to respond to that. So that looks like a good, a good possibility going, going forward. But I also wonder if, you know, given the number of these, these surveys and the concern about survey fatigue, if we could think about spacing these out, how we're spacing these things out through the year, and whether it would be worth kind of doing a focus group with a few high school students and, and middle school students at the beginning of the year maybe to, to kind of generate some ideas about what might motivate them to, to be, be more interested in responding to these things.
Let me address the first question though, I think it's an important one, and that is, there's, is there more of a scheduled way in which we're going to do surveys? Yes, the teaching and learning team, Shannon and Cara have looked at that and are now putting that in practice that's saying, yep, this, this survey that we just gave, the school quality survey, given every year in the spring, this is the timing, and this is the way we're going to administer it. Like, that's now in place, along with a rotation of every other year for an equity survey. And then we ask the community about a sex education survey. So rotation on that, so we're not every year coming up with four or five different surveys. Really, we think there, there is, you know, maybe the window for two a year type of thing. If you start getting into four and five, people are not paying attention anymore. And, and they're feeling like you either don't need the data or aren't going to look at it. So I think that's important. And then the part about the focus group, we can certainly be talking to high school students about it. We do meet with them every so often, especially with some of the leadership teams. And we do ask questions about the high school and what can we do better to improve? This can be one of those areas we bring up.
And I would just like to, you know, say that, that a big area of strength is obviously for, for heritage, an 83% response rate is, is. and 83% response rate is incredible in any, in any survey context. So whatever, whatever they were doing there, that looks like a great model to try and extend to, to other places. To the extent that's possible, obviously, it's very different environments.
Sure.
Yep, I, I think we covered everything here. Thank you for thinking about the schedule of surveys. That, that was going to be my number one comment, that this came in the midst of others and it was very late in the year, so. And being cognizant of when it's being given to students around testing and things like that, just so we can keep, keep that in mind. The only other thing I wanted to say is there were, I appreciate all of us focusing on our opportunities for improvement because there are some challenges that were revealed here. There were many, many positives as well. So just wanted to thank Buildings and Grounds and Administration and Staff for some really good scores in some important areas as well.
I, I think that's important to note, that we're often looking at the areas that we can improve. And I do that all the time to focus on my own growth as a superintendent. But when you do talk to somebody like Amy who does the analysis for a living, she does state that the Selenary schools do, do great with the survey overall. You know, and certainly there are some areas to improve on. But I think, I appreciate you pointing that out. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Oh, Jenny?
Well, and just in that vein, they're always going to look for, like, because some of those percentages, even for the most concerned, we're, we're really minimally concerned. So they're always going to look, you're always going to have something that falls into that area of, of improvement. So I think that's important to note too, that there's, there are always going to be four or five things that pop up because we're looking for where do we focus our efforts and our energies to improve.
Yeah. And I think that's great, that's a great strength of our staff, whether it's our admin team or our, you know, teachers and support staff, they are always trying to get better. And it's part of what, what we do in the school district, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving to our second scheduled report, Back to School Report. Anna Brittnell, Director of Communications, Cara Davis, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Kurt Ellis, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Whenever you're ready.
As you'll see here in a minute, we've all been very, very busy since we met last time. Seems like a long time ago too. Thank you, Ben. From my end in Human Resources, I'll be relatively quick. Since we met last time, we've had 52 employee transitions. And, and just kind of for the record, that includes those who have separated from the district, those who are new hires or those who have changed assignments. And I highlight that number because in and of itself, it doesn't sound like a lot, but every one of those things touches a lot of other areas. And so if there's a new hire, we need to issue a laptop, we need to issue an AUP, we need to create a, an email address, we need to assign a room, we need to assign a phone number, et cetera. And so these things sound really, really easy when they're in my office, but they literally touch just about every area of the district when that stuff happens. The same thing happens when somebody separates, there's the process of collecting all that information. And, and again, it seems very, very easy, but, but even the change of assignment, somebody moving from one room to another, one building to another generates a lot of work for other folks. Within the office specifically, you'll remember when we executed our last contract with the ESEA, step and lane changes are scheduled to take place here at the end of this month. So we have one more pay on our, on our 18-month bridge that we've done. And then starting in September, we moved to the new pay scale. And because it's an entirely new pay scale, it involved 311 individual moves for people. And so Amy Tyson in particular has done a great job with that. But the rest of that team with Kelly, Shelley and Carly have done really well with that as well. And, and even though the end is near, we're going to start school right after, or right before Labor Day, whether we're ready or not, we still have some holes to fill. And, and I want to kind of echo what Superintendent Lott said a little bit ago here. We do have some really, really important things that we need to get done before we start school. We're looking for a French teacher and I know the high school's interviewing this week to look at that, but, but we literally had one applicant for that position. Gone are the days with some of these positions where we have 30, 40 applicants. They're just not out there. And to Superintendent Lott's point earlier, it's not a Selen phenomenon. There's nobody that has these positions. We're looking for special education from the director down to teachers into the par educator world. One of the things that has occurred in the last two weeks, July 25th, the legislature passed PA 184 of 2022, which allows retirees to come back to work. My phone has not rung off the hook since that happened. Nobody is saying, hey, I'm glad to have this out here. But it does create some opportunities for some people. There is a bit of a hiccup to it in the sense that you have to have been retired for at least nine months. And so we had, as an example, we had an individual who retired for us in June with July 1st effective date that had every intention of coaching crew or rowing for us in the fall. And on July 25th, he and the team found out that that could not happen without jeopardizing his pension and his healthcare subsidy, which is obviously a big deal. So we've had to scramble to fill that. I think ultimately it will provide some relief for us, but temporarily it's caused a little bit of, of heartache for that one particular program and that one particular individual. I would caution the board, and I know that you guys engage politically with our legislators, I think that this has some impact for us on the short term. But when you have a pension system that's contingent on people feeding the pension system so that the people who are receiving it can get one, having people that are not feeding that pension system take holes or slots that used to be filled by others is not a long-term solution that we want to be a part of. So as you talk to the, your legislators, please do, share your thoughts on that. Most significantly in terms of need is bus drivers and, and the runs. I know Superintendent Lott mentioned that we did a great job last year. I cannot overstate the work that Rex and Tracy and that entire crew do every morning. It's who's not here, who can take what run, et cetera, et cetera. And that rubber band is stretched just about as far as it's going to go. And so he's working on some, some contingency plans. I know that it's not for today's discussion, but there are also some things happening in the city relative to road closures and construction that are going to complicate things for us. So bus drivers is an area of critical need. And so if you know people that are interested in doing that, we obviously need them. And lastly, in terms of us being able to kind of fill our holes and serve our students well, we need par educators. That's a longstanding, ongoing need. And again, not specific to Selen, it's, it's everywhere. But it is a, a real need. It was interesting, I had a conference call this afternoon with my colleagues from Dexter and Chelsea. And in Chelsea, just in the last two weeks, they've lost their payroll specialist, their benefit specialist and their accounts payable person. In Ann Arbor, they don't have a benefits coordinator or a payroll person. So I hope that doesn't have a negative impact on you, Mrs. Miller. Yeah. But, but it's, it's just a really, really interesting time in the K-12. And in fairness, it's everywhere. I mean, you can go to a restaurant, it's hard to get service because they can't find people to work. So it is a challenge for us, but we're continuing to work at it and will all year long. I think that we used to have this cycle of hiring that went on in June and July and then we get ready to go in August. I think cycling now is a 12-month process. But we're really excited about the people that we're bringing onboard. An enthusiastic crew that wants to be in Selen. And, and I think that's really important for us. So that is what our summer has looked like since we last met. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Davis.
Thank you. And I do have to credit Assistant Superintendent Ellis for, you know, getting all the puzzle pieces of all the people where they need to be to the extent that we can because it has been a non-stop summer of interviewing and hiring and providing information to our staff so that we can do the really energizing and fun things like professional development and learning, which is, as you'll see later, about culture and climate competency and really bringing our staff onboard. So we are committed to fostering a positive culture of professional growth and promoting collective district-level momentum around continuous improvement. So now that we are here in August, this is considered our launch month. But I would be remiss if I did not say that the amount of self-learning that teachers and staff do across the summer months is absolutely incredible, especially here in Selen. We have had teachers in AP training, PLTW training, summit training, doing on their own curriculum hours that they have, where they've set some goals and worked with partnerships across the district in order to improve their craft and their curriculum so that they are continuing to meet the needs of our students in a ever-changing environment. So our launch is often on the heels of some incredible work that's happened in the last couple of summer, summer months. So we do, thank you, have a really robust professional development cycle to bring staff back onboard. And while this is a snapshot of our year-long professional development opportunities, we're really focusing on our intros. So our opening days, our teacher leader work, and then of course, our new teacher cohort success series. And we've worked really hard as a teaching and learning team to put our heads together, to be really responsive to the feedback that our staff has given to us and that our building principals and our district leaders has given to us about what makes the best professional development. And we've learned that having some additional flexibility, being able to differentiate based upon your role and being cognizant about how we're running professional development makes a really big difference. So when we think about what we're coming into to set up for success, again, culture, climate, competency, and of course, confidence as well in starting the year off well. The left side is kind of covering some of our new staff opportunities. We're going to be launching with a new staff induction that Assistant Superintendent Ellis will be running on the morning of August 17th. And this is a great one because it brings all of our new hires together. We're also really being intentional about who's where, when. Where our teachers and our par educators and our food service providers and transportation are together in the same room because we're all serving students. So that induction will kick off on the 17th with some logistical training in the afternoon for our certified teachers. We're involving, of course, some luncheons. Food makes a really big difference, especially when we're making them working luncheons, where we've got our admin team coming in to partner with our new staff. And then of course, our, we're partnering with the Selen Education Association for lunching with the certified staff on the 18th. We have onboarding scheduled, all ready to go. Jen and Kelly take the lead on this, our two instructional designers. And we also partner with our instructional technology team and the mentors as well. Last year, we started inviting the mentors to the new teacher training so that they would have an additional opportunity in a structured way to start, again, off with success, to set up for that success and know what the expectations were for the year. Another opportunity for them to see the bigger picture. So we're doing that again this year. And then even in the new staff training, we are really cognizant about some of the feedback we've received from the different roles. So if you are a social worker or a counselor, you have a slightly different responsibility to start the school year than you might if you're a gen ed teacher or a special ed teacher. So we work to make sure that the schedule that we have for professional training is attentive to that. And then we set up for success inside of that new teacher training, knowing that that cycle will be ongoing throughout the year. We did learn early on in our staff development cycles with new teachers that of course, the fire hose syndrome is real. So too much information right from the get-go is not always the best way to support our teachers. So we've really worked closely with Human Resources to decide on the best, and Special Education, deciding what is the best schedule and cadence of training so that teachers get what they need when they need it. Not all at once necessarily, and coming out in a variety of different formats. Then on the right-hand side, we of course are also supporting all of our professionals at a whole district level. So this year's whole district professional development theme is Inclusion is from Policy to Practice. We actually are starting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, so we'll be here. We have about 100 educators who signed up for what we call a Flex PD, which is, this is part of that Flex idea in which they are able to elect tomorrow to come earlier. And that is in lieu of coming in the afternoon on the 24th, which is also our elementary open house. So it gives them a little bit more time back. They're still doing the required PD, but it's not at a constrained time that was also creating stress when they really wanted to be doing that. So that's starting tomorrow morning. Shannon, Steve and I will be leading that. We'll be doing some stations around the transgender policy, Bridge to Civility, and our new digital device guidelines to talk about some of the policy and guidelines that we put in place to create safe spaces, safe and inclusive spaces, as well as doing some direct whole group instruction as a part of that. Then we will also incorporate before school starts, building level professional development. That's oriented around building goals and that is generally led by building principals and the vision that they have for their buildings. That is primarily starting on August 25th, but there's a, a launch portion on the 24th as well. And then we have a variety of role-specific training between here and there. And I should stop to mention that in the next 15, the 15 days, starting on August 8th through August 25th, out of the 15 days, we have 10 days where professional development is offered. So it's quite a robust schedule that we are running with a lot of different players involved to make sure that our staff have what they need. Karen Hervey, Monica Ellis, Steve, Shannon, myself, Julie, Kelly, it's not Julie, Kelly, Jen, Kurt, Anna, and then our, our departments too. So it's a real team effort to make sure that everybody has what they need. And then we are also partnered with the WISD, of course, offering a countywide professional development opportunity. This is optional for our staff and that is on August 22nd. It's the Monday before we start our own launch days on the 24th and the 25th. That feels dangerous. Wrong button, Anna. So I'm going to turn it over to Anna who has to give her presentation without any slides.
I can't do that. Yay! That might be a sign.
The theme is for the WISD's training?
What does a culturally responsive classroom look like?
Got it.
Okay, we're in business, I think. So just sticking with a little bit of the team theme that Cara just spoke to, I want to, I want to talk on behalf of the core team here at Central Office. And, and you heard a little bit from Kurt and the HR team and what they've been doing all summer and what they still have to do between now. And really, that's continuous throughout the year. Cara and, and Teaching and Learning and that team and everything that they have to do. We have Rex Clary here who has been operating short staff forever, for what it seems to me. And he's driving a bus twice a day and still doing his job and making sure nothing, nothing ever fails. Miranda, I don't know how you do your job, I don't think anyone else on earth can do it. Jay Grossman's a part of that team. And from a technology standpoint, the, the work that his team has to do to get tech devices ready for students and staff to come back, it's, it's a big load. And then of course, you know, Steve, he's a superintendent. So the, the expectation level from both our internal kind of school community and our broader community, I don't think is going to change. It's going to be high expectations in all the things that we do. And then you're going to throw on the largest bond ever in school history. Starting, really last week, we regrouped and talked about what this is going to look like and what the best way is to launch a successful campaign that'll get us from now through November 8th. So I'm just going to speak a little bit to it. I'm sure that you'll be involved in a lot of things that are going to come up in the next eight to 10 weeks. And then if you, if you need any reports between now and then, someone from our team will be happy to do that. So kind of a two-pronged approach, school and community. Just go through a few of the things. The, the classroom model is a suggestion from King Scott and Clark in a way that they have found it to be very successful, especially in a community like ours where the school is so tightly aligned and our parents are super involved. So we'll talk a little bit about that later. Cara and Steve have been working to arrange staff meetings quickly. They're going to have to get out to the buildings right away because really, we're in a campaign period now where because absenteeism has become so much more popular, our campaign is really won in the month of September, not so much October and November anymore. So September is crucial. And right away, we're going to have to get into some of those staff meetings and really pull from some of the things that Cara has talked about, our PD and our, you know, all that stuff that happens upfront for a teaching staff and, and building administrators. Building leaders, we will lean on them. We had an admin meeting today and we talked at length about their role and some supplies and things that we can give them to be successful, to be able to answer questions and, and support us at the building level. Friends in the classroom, this is a, this is, this kind of goes with that classroom model where basically every K-5 teacher will be asked to identify one to two classroom leaders. Some of them will be the room parent or the room guardian and some of them may just be parents who are passionate about school bonds and, and understand what this means for the future of Selen. So they will identify one to two parents that want to get involved. And then we will lean on them heavily to be that liaison between our message and what needs to get out there and that entire classroom list. And, and King Scott and Clark really believe that that model is, is successful and has proven to be successful in other districts that they've worked with. From the 612, it's a little bit harder because the classroom model doesn't work as well with, with obviously multiple classes. So we're going to hit heavy on extracurriculars, meeting with those groups that have, parent groups who are generally really involved and passionate about some of the projects that are going to be happening from this bond. And then of course, we always lean heavily on our DPC group, which is our District Parent Council that Steve and I meet with once a month. That involves all of our PTOs and PTAs, K-12. From a community standpoint, again, Selen community is always very, very supportive and we, we have a huge footprint in the community already. So there's a long list of different things that we're going to get involved with, be present at, set up different booths and tables and informational, and informational things for them to, to really understand what this is for and what it does for our district and, and the broader community. Just some general marketing materials. So obviously, on the digital side, with lots of social media, we'll provide our building administrators, our community ed, Steve and his, what, what he does weekly with graphics that go out often with a cadence between now and November, those will all be scheduled. We're building a bond website. We recently purchased a district-level Remind subscription. So we are able to use the Remind app in an entirely new way. If you, you may be receiving some of those messages in the coming weeks as we, as we launch it off the ground. That's another thing that needs to happen between now and the first day of school. And then we will utilize our Let's Talk platform where we actually have a very bond-specific Let's Talk page. So people can just look for interest areas is what we call them on Let's Talk to get questions answered. And then what's nice about Let's Talk is as a team, we can collaborate. So they may send something to Superintendent Lott where he knows Miranda has the best answer because it's finance-related, we can share it with her, loop her in. And then it really just makes us stronger as a team because we're all learning as we're... a team because we're all learning as we're answering questions together. From a print side of things, which you'll see in a minute, bond boards are something that are provided actually by Clark Construction and King Scott. They have a liaison that we work with, and they build the bond boards. So in all seven of our buildings and the senior center, you'll see eight different bond boards that are large and on display as soon as you walk in the building. And we kind of extract everything from there. There's first-day folders. We're going to work with building level admin to not only have something to stuff in those first-day folders K-5, but also available registration for 612, and that's got to happen fairly quickly. Obviously, your flyers and postcards, newsletters such as the senior center, and then, we are working to put together two to three mailers that will go out to the broader community in the mail, based on the timeline and how we want to do it. And then, this is just an example. So this is a bond board. This is specific to Heritage School. Kind of on the left, on the left side, they show a map or a, yeah, I guess, a building map that shows exactly what's going to be happening based on what that school needs, and that was all established through the assessments, and you can get, we'll send you all of these, so you have one of each school. To the right, we've kind of identified three areas for education, for facilities, and for the future. So in every building, we like to list out what things are related to education, what's related to the facility, and what's related to the future. Oh, perfect. Okay, it goes to the Let's Talk. And then, at the bottom, there's some renderings of some of the projects that might be happening in that building. So every building will have one of these, including Liberty, and then also the senior center, and then, we are able to extract this information to build some of those other items that I just talked about. One thing that we have found to be interesting is, obviously, we want to move quickly and get a lot of stuff off the ground, but everything, every single thing we do has to go through legal. So we have to, we have to create it, we have to send it, we have to draft it, and everything goes, everything, from a small graphic to something as complicated as this. So it's a, it's a turnkey type thing, so. And that is it for the bond for right now. That's kind of where we are, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
That's it? No, I'm just kidding. I was also, yeah, that's, I love these. So I've heard about the bond boards, and this is the first time I'm seeing it, and I absolutely love the idea of building marketing and rising up through, through all of the schools to really make sure that the parents understand what the bond is about. So I think that that's really great. I love the idea of friends in the classroom. That's wonderful, and maybe they would all like to have free lunch with the Foundation for Celine Area Schools at the Fall Fundraiser because they are going to earn their lunch. So appreciate that. Quick thing for Cara, I just figured I'd go first this time, I guess. I really, really like how intentional you all are being around onboarding. That can be an incredibly difficult, but also fantastic experience, and that they can bond together to support each other, and that they can have other staff who have been here for longer really, really mentor them. So I really, really liked this slide and appreciate it. Setting Up for Success, that's exactly the slide that I saw. I just wanted to say to Kurt, thank you for all of the work that you've been doing this summer. I actually was talking with some community members out and about in the beautiful summer, and they specifically brought you up by name and said they can't imagine how busy you are right now, and that, so people are talking about you and appreciate the staffing challenges that we have in many areas, but really getting everybody ready so the kids can go back. Thanks. Questions, comments?
I was just going to say that that Flex PD idea is amazing. I think that as a former classroom teacher, that would have been something I would have definitely taken advantage of because those days when you're just pulling out every second that you can to get the classroom ready, and especially in an open house, you want to make a great first impression. So I really appreciate that you're offering that for staff, and that's an idea I hope other districts will capitalize on because I know I would still appreciate that now, even my 20-something year of teaching.
Absolutely.
Oh, you need my paper in front of me. I guess, sticking with the professional development, I like how you're looking at doing that throughout the year as well. I think that's, I think you all have already been doing that. That's super important, and I appreciate it. So for HR, sorry, I have my notes here. Are there any, like, upcoming recruitment fairs that we can, like, promote at the state or local level?
Yeah, we don't have any scheduled right now. We've done hourly recruitment fairs. Some of the positions that we have, and I'll use a couple of specific examples. We've had premier substitutes and building substitutes for the last probably eight to nine months, and those positions are typically filled with people who were looking for teaching jobs and didn't find one that they wanted. And so, for us to hire for those right now is very difficult. We will do an hourly job fair before the school year starts. In the past, we've partnered with the city, and we'll certainly explore doing that again. And when we do those hourly job fairs, it's predominantly bus drivers, custodians, and paras that we hire at those, we literally will make offers on the spot. We just haven't had tremendous turnout from those in the last couple of sessions that we've had, but we will certainly do that.
Yeah, let us know how we can promote on social media and stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, can we, can we just take a minute for the, for the two of you, since you're here? Like, tell us, what, what is required for a bus driver? What is the, what are their incentives? What is the typical hourly rate? Like, can we kind of promote that a little bit right here?
Sure. So Rex, you can come on up and help me out here, but in terms of incentives, yes, we do offer a signing bonus, which is pretty standard in that industry. That number depends on whether you're certified or not. And so, as a prospective bus driver, you kind of fall into one of two categories. You're either a bus driver that's already got a CDL and has been driving someplace or for somebody else, or you're somebody that just is interested in starting this. The people that are interested in starting it, it's a little longer road, as you might imagine, because there's a lot of training involved in it. What's that? Oh, sorry. Comes naturally, I guess. Anyway, but it does take a little while longer to get those folks trained and ready to go. And it ends up, we end up investing about $1,700 just to get them certified. While they're getting certified, we typically use them as monitors on the bus so they can figure out what that cadence looks like. We also have referral bonuses, so if an employee refers somebody to us. The thing that's really hard for us right now, and I know this is really sensitive for Rex because, you know, he interacts with his peers throughout the county, it's a finite number of people, and what ends up happening is they just keep going from one to the other to the other. Where we're really struggling right now, and you as a Board of Education know this, and so does our community, people are privatizing transportation and a lot of other core services all over the county, and we've not privatized anything. And we feel like it's really important for our community, and most of the people that work for us live in the community or live very close by. And so, we're really proud of the fact that we haven't privatized anything, and as a result of that, you know, our wage might be a little bit lower than a private company is, but we still have that pension system. The tough part for us is that a lot of the people that are coming into the system, it's really hard to see the value of a pension when you're 25 years old, and it's, it's hard to explain that to somebody who doesn't see that. In a strange twist, the Affordable Care Act has had a negative impact on us hiring from the standpoint that benefits is also something that stands out in the K-12 world because our benefit packages are so, so rich and so positive, and yet, I have people every day come in and say, "I really don't care about that. I'm still on my mom and dad's benefits." And you can, until you're 26, and so, but yeah, we do have some of those programs in place. Rex, you want to?
It's a six-to-eight-week process to get somebody trained, and to bring them in and to start that process, the earlier the better. And we, like you said, we use them as bus monitors. We help them pass the CDL test at the Secretary of State, and at that point, we can start training them as a bus driver. It is a process, though. It doesn't happen. And in our incentive signing bonus, we don't want to take other drivers from other districts, but, and we just don't get traction that way either. So, and it's district-wide. If anybody of you were up north this summer, I'm sure you heard advertisement, if you listen to the radio, if you drove by bus lots, there was always advertisements for "need bus driver, need bus driver, need bus driver."
I have a thought. What's our retention rate then on that, of putting in $1,700, doing the training? Do we, do we retain them and keep them year after year after year?
We have had good retention. I think that, that it's certainly dipped in the last few years. We have, if you were to look at our staff, and I'd be happy to bring this back to you, this would be actually kind of interesting data to have, like the seniority list of our drivers. It's really become quite disparate. We have people that are 15-plus years, which is a long time to drive a bus, and then, we have a bunch that are in the first three or four years. It's that kind of middle ground that seems to shrink. And so, if we can get past a certain point, they stay. And I think the other thing that we've really tried to do, and in addition, you know, to go back, and one of the things we asked was the wage, and we start just over $19 an hour. So it's not, it's not an insignificant amount of money. But I think one of the other things that we have really tried to highlight is just how rewarding it can be. If you see a bus driver that has a great rapport with the students on their bus, it really is kind of heartwarming to see those children go to that person out in the community. And those are the kinds of source. When we talk to the bus drivers, they're the first face of the district every morning, and they're the last face every morning, and we have people that really embrace that and take great pride in that. But it is, it is, you know, sometimes you're driving with 60 kids behind you on an icy road too, so.
I'm going to put you on the spot here a little bit. So we have a sign-on bonus. Would some type of retention incentive assist us in that regard, or do you think that...
Yeah, no, and we've done that in collective bargaining in the past in different ways. I think what we saw from the union this year is they preferred just to have a different wage as opposed to a retention bonus, and so, we had, in the previous contract, there was a loyalty bonus in what we've done, and it's really because of the market. The market kind of demanded that we raise the rate for everybody, and so, we did that. I think we used to start at 15, 15.45 an hour, and went up to almost 19, and so, we just converted what had been loyalty bonuses into that. Yep, yep, no, it's good questions.
One other thing that, that I was thinking about that you've mentioned before is that the number of hours can sometimes be an inhibitor because people need more hours. So I know that in the past, you've worked with other departments or other areas to supply more hours in a different way. So it might not be driving bus. Can you talk a little bit about that, Rex?
So right now, we currently have three bus drivers that do mornings and afternoons, and then, they work either in the cafeteria or they do nighttime custodial work. And we found we've got some traction with that. They're eligible for benefits, or they're eligible to take the cash and move for health benefits. But then, there are those that just want to work in the morning and work in the afternoon and not work on the weekends and not work on Sundays, not, not working evenings, not doing sports trips. So each person and substitute, Frank Carey's in the back row here, Frank is one of our super substitutes. Drives every day, he's in the district, but he also goes to Florida. He went to Yellowstone this summer. He didn't get washed away. But, you know, there are drivers like that will show up every day they're around, but they also want to take their vacation time as well. But that model, we have reached out, we have three drivers that are eligible for benefits and that do work in both departments. And that's one thing that, it was nice being in operations, that I can do that, I can work with Larry in food service and make that mix as well, so.
And I think one other thing that I just want to know is that privatization doesn't, doesn't necessarily solve this problem. It just takes this problem off of Rex's plate. And I think that the benefit of having Rex in charge and having people with relationships to our community makes a huge impact, and I can say that because I work in a district where things are privatized, and the turnover rate and the lack of connection is noticeable compared to when, to when I was here. So I appreciate your efforts. I know they're getting harder and harder and harder, so if we can do anything to support, to support you, especially in, in the areas that we've mentioned, but also in, in other areas. I know I have two kids that are being impacted by the French situation, so, so, you know, if the board can do anything to help promote, let us know.
Absolutely, thank you. It is a great opportunity to highlight the fact that we have not privatized things. I know that is an ongoing fear. I hear it all the time, and I, and I kind of, and I'm not trying to make light of it, but I say it's, you know, kind of like when my kids were afraid of the monster under their bed. At some point, you figure out it's not there, and we haven't privatized anything. We're obligated by law to go out to bid on things, but the reality is, in transportation, I'm not aware of a single success story anywhere in Michigan where it's gotten better. You get this influx of cash because you generally sell your fleet, and then, when you figure out it's not working, you have no buses. And so, it's just, it's not a viable option for us. The better option is to figure out who the people like Frank are in our community and get them working for us, and that's part of what we're doing, is trying to identify that kind of profile and be more targeted in our recruiting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Frank and friends. Any other questions for Kurt or Rex, since we have had them up here?
I just had another question, but, but it wasn't related to Kurt. It's Anna, my third. I was, I was going in threes with the HR, PD, and then...
Okay, go ahead.
I may not have it. That's why the whole team's here, but I will do my best.
Oh, no, I think you will. So you mentioned through and checking everything, so I, obviously, that's great and keeps us, you know, keeps us in line and not, you know, crossing. So part of that is the way that staff, right, can talk about the bond as far as informing versus board members can go out and say, "Vote yes," you know? So I don't know if there's, like, what kind of communication goes out, I guess, to the staff to make sure that they're, you know, keeping things, not politicizing the bond.
Not saying "vote yes."
Yeah, and then, how can we, I'm sure, will be pulled in as board members and help, help support that campaign where we can say, "Vote yes."
Sure. Yeah, so starting with building admin and working down, everything's going to kind of trickle down. When we provide them with that first batch of materials, digital and, and hard print, they will also kind of have a tips and tricks sheet, what you can and cannot do. Another thing that we've done is even, we don't expect, we don't know all the answers. We often will have to get counsel on how this works, so we don't expect our building administrators or our teachers to have all the answers either. So that's really the, the goal of that QR code, both on all of our items, but then, we also want to give every building administrator and staff member that would need them little business cards that have the QR code, and we want to let them know that they can be comfortable in saying, "I don't know the answer to that," you know, or if they're not comfortable answering in a way that may be supportive, they can just hand them that QR code. Please submit your, your question to, through the Let's Talk, and it'll be answered in a way that, that we know will be on the up and up.
All right, thank you.
Might as well stay up there for a second. One other thing I thought of. Can you tell us how students will be involved in this? So last year, and I would love Allison's perspective, and you don't have to have an answer now, but please think about this because this would be a wonderful area for you to get involved possibly with your, your student body. I remember we had about 350 seniors who turned 18 and registered to vote, and that was a wonderful thing to see, and we look forward to them voting this year. How will you involve them? I mean, this bond is for them, and we, we talk about being student-led. How do we, how do we use them to get, what can help their studies and help their, their future classes behind them?
Sure. I think if anything, it will be a great experience. We always talk about, you know, what happens after the bell and those experiences that we provide to students that will, long-term, probably impact some of their learning more than what they do in the classroom sometimes. So we've talked about involving them in the campaign process to the extent that we can. There's obviously many student groups that require service hours and things like that, and then, there's the students that are just on the kind of political trail and have interest in potentially going into some type of government job and are already interested in this. So really, getting with, I think the addition of the activities coordinator position has helped us in many ways in getting students involved, so we will lean heavily on those NHS groups and any service-related groups to find out if there are students who want to be a part of what we're calling our champions team, who can attend events with us, and there's nothing better than seeing a smiling kid at a tent as opposed to one of the eight of us, so.
No offense, but yeah, we love seeing kids.
I was just going to share anecdotally that when I was a senior in high school, I was, I was on a team that was promoting a bond, and so, when I was just back home, my brother
And so when I was just back home, my brother and I were back home, and my brother was talking about, like, different parts of the high school. And I said, "Those weren't there when I was in high school. We fought for those, for you to have those." So it was a wonderful experience. And I think even more than just political aspirations, just a connection to the community and leaving a legacy on a place that you've spent a lot of time at. So I appreciate that kids can choose to be involved if they'd like to be involved and share what their dreams and hopes might be.
Absolutely.
Any other final thoughts, questions?
Yeah.
Allison, you want to be on our campaign team?
Bring us home, Allison. Let's go.
We'll certainly look into it if that's something you're interested in. I was just going to say, I think it's been shown historically that when students are given an opportunity to give back to their community and be more educated in the process, that it happens. I'm speaking largely from a perspective of NHS because it's a group that I'm part of. But we have blood drives where we get all these pints from students that really don't get a lot of incentive other than missing class and getting cookies, which admittedly is an incentive, but it's not monetarily. It's mostly out of a concern for your community. And there's also, with NHS, you have the drives where we have our food drive in December, where we got thirteen thousand pounds of food for the Celine community last year. And I think the Celine student body, something that I'm personally very proud of us for being part of, is that when we have the opportunity, we give back to the community. And I think it would definitely be interesting to look into students to help promote these bonds because I think it's definitely something that we would have interest in.
Awesome, thank you.
Sold.
I already wrote your name down.
Any other questions or comments for the group? All right. We know you're busy, so get back to it. Thank you so much. Moving on to our first and only discussion item tonight, Finance Committee meeting update, Treasurer Gerby.
All righty, I'll try to give you a few things. So Finance Committee met today, and we had three things that we primarily focused on. Number one was the bond. And Anna has done an awesome job of talking about the boards and some of the promotional things. So we talked about some of those kinds of things. We talked about, we've had some conversation about, it's called Administrative Bulletin 1014. And it's basically a way that Michigan public schools are ranked by their financial data. And we looked specifically at instructional support. We looked at our instructional salaries, our administrative costs, those kinds of things. And I will tell you, we continue to do what I, when I joined the team, one of the strengths, and it continues to be a strength, is we spend our money in the classroom, right? Like, we really do. And it comes through in here out of, you know, eight hundred and twenty-one school districts. And we're in the, you know, top one hundred and twenty-five there on instructional services and fifty for instructional supports. And our administrative costs are relative, are affordable, you know, we're seven seventy-one. So out of eight hundred and twenty-one. So now those things will be transient. Sometimes they'll change and go up or down depending on, you know, the support that our staff needs, support that our students need, those kinds of things. But at the same time, like, we're spending our money where we should. And so that, we wanted to look at that as a finance team, and we did. And I think we even talked about that a little bit at a previous meeting. And so I think it was good that we visited that. And then the last thing that I'll highlight on the budget side, obviously, is we care about the state A budget, right? And so the state A budget was signed into law July fourteenth by the governor. And I'll give a few just highlights. She proposed a four hundred and fifty dollar increase for students. So that's a good and solid increase per student. That'll obviously help a lot. And they are making specific investments in a couple of areas that are, that in my opinion, incredibly welcome. Number one, an increase to seventy-five percent funding for special ed services in the school. So that's a significant commitment being made to, you know, to special education services for students, and I'm happy about that. But there's some at-risk also increases. And I know that some of, you know, I attended this meeting on the twentieth of July, and that was also with Trustee McVeigh, and Trustee Eastep was there as well. And, you know, one of the questions was, "Well, then how are we going to get it?" Right? Like, and they asked us to kind of slow down and say, "Well, we haven't figured out. Is it going to funnel through the ISD? Is it going to be grants?" And so Miranda gets to have all the fun of that. And she does her job incredibly, but man, I'm sure she just loves that process. But it is what it is. And there are other things that are in here I don't want to get to in the, you know, spending forever. A couple of things I thought were exciting. They're trying to do some things to address educator, education or educator shortages. So some creative things around growing your own programs, around student-teacher compensation, being able to do some of those things. And I think that those are things that will, you know, help the education profession to be more marketable and to be more, will obtain quality and great people in classrooms. And that's the idea. There's troops to teachers. And I'm just kind of scrolling through some of the notes and some of the things I have about early on education, career and technical. Ooh, school safety grants. They are making a significant change, in my opinion, with regards to school and safety grants. And that is that before, school districts had to apply for these grants, now what they are going to do is they are going to allot the money on a per-pupil basis. So, you know, every school will have access to that money, and I think it's the way it should be. So that is that. And then the other thing is about MIPSER rates. There was some pretty significant changes with regards to MIPSERS and funding and those kinds of things. And then the last thing we talked about on the twentieth, Mr. Ellis already talked about this, about this, that pretty significant change with regards to the nine months. And I guess I would back up and say, you know, yeah, we're in need of parapros and bus drivers and custodians and guest teachers and those people who would like to get into those areas, who have been out of education for nine months and want to do that. We, there is no longer a critical shortage list, right? So we would appreciate that support to staff classrooms. If any of us questions, I mean, there were, like I said, there's other things, but those are the highlights.
Brad, Mr. Trustee, Treasurer Gerby, you've been holding on to this information about Bulletin 1014. I've just spent the last five minutes scrolling through it. It's fascinating. It really is interesting stuff. I think I'd like to be on the Finance Committee next time.
Any questions or comments for Brad? Lot of good info. And he's clearly passionate about it, so thank you very much. Administration updates, Dr. Latch.
Mine's very brief. I'm really excited for the start of the school year. And I really do want to thank sort of the core team that was presenting tonight. All the work that they have to put into getting the school year prepped is incredible. A lot of people taking no vacation time because they can't, although I will be encouraging that in the fall. At any rate, it's because we're trying to staff the district or even the financial piece with Miranda and, you know, getting things rolled out, communications for the bond, buildings and grounds, figuring out how we're going to approach the bus driver shortage. So there's just a lot of work. And then you already heard the heavy lift that the Teaching and Learning Department is doing as it relates to professional development, Cara, Shannon, and so forth. Just everybody's doing an incredible job, and I'm lucky to be a part of it.
Thank you. Moving on to board updates, Allison, we usually have students go first. Do you want to do it first? Okay, go ahead.
So my update, again, it's pretty short because the school year hasn't actually started yet. But mostly, I'm talking about our freshman orientation, which is next Thursday, August eighteenth, where our link leaders, including myself, will be orienting our freshmen to the new school. So we're really excited about that. And I believe on the same day, the web leaders are going to be doing their sixth-grade orientation for the sixth graders in the middle school. And it's mostly for both of them. It's just to get them used to the building and get them used to other people. Especially with the high school, it's this huge giant building that's, you know, it's three floors. It's so much bigger than anything the middle schoolers have been in before. And so it's really important for this orientation, for us specifically, just to get them ready for the school year. The high school sports began yesterday on the eighth, or at least most of the fall ones, including cross-country cheer, football, soccer, equestrian, field hockey, golf, and rowing. And then swimming begins on the fifteenth. And the middle school sports are also starting to be, also starting soon. We have the volleyball, cross-country, and football starting, I think, yesterday as well. And then finally, we have our open houses coming up, which we talked about a little bit. And I know that Pleasant Ridge Harvest and Woodland Meadows and Heritage are on the twenty-fourth, which I believe was mentioned earlier. And the middle school will have their open house on the thirtieth. And the high school will have, and the alternative high school will have theirs on September eighth. So again, not a lot of information because the school year hasn't started yet, but yeah.
I think that was a lot of information. Good work. Anyone want to follow that with a board update? Yeah, Jenny, go ahead.
I would be taken to task at home if I didn't add that tennis also started yesterday because I have a tennis player. So good luck to all the fall athletes and coaches. Thank you for, you know, your efforts. For those, I did not realize until I had a fall athlete, for those of you with younger kids, the best week to take vacation is the week before this, so first week in August. So as your kids are nearing the upper grades, secondary grades, knowing that fall sports start this early is sometimes a surprise. So Stuff the Bus is this Friday, so you might have been seeing boxes around town or your neighborhood might have a drop-off. I think there's a drop-off at Treasurer Gerby's house. Up the road. Oh, and at Secretary Jones. Okay.
And Candace's.
There you go. I have a candidate for Ms. Celine at my house. So she will be here at Stuff the Bus on Friday and then moving through the community to help with those, with the other fifteen or fourteen candidates. There's fifteen total. So they'll be helping and assisting with that Stuff the Bus, which then leads us into our Summer Fest, which I think, being a part of this community, Summer Fest is kind of, I don't know, it's kind of like, it reminds me of like a reunion. I see kids and families coming back together downtown and seeing each other maybe for the first time since school got out. So keeping in mind that those activities are happening this weekend. And then I just wanted to make a quick note that while we have a lot of excitement and we're talking a lot about fall, I know in particular that there are some families that fall is going to look a little different for them this year, some of our staff members. And so I just wanted to just publicly say that for families or for community members that fall is looking a little different, that you are in our hearts and minds as we approach this fall in addition to celebrating the return for many of our staff and students.
All right, thanks, Jenny. Any other board updates? Yeah, Candace.
I have a quick one. Now that the cat is out of the bag, that I'm not running for school board this fall. Just have enjoyed my time serving on the board, and it certainly has nothing to do with my experience here and just my love for this district and passion for this work. But I have a lot of work travel coming up and just balancing that with being there for my kids and wanting to be at all their activities and all of that. So made that tough decision. But I'm excited for the slate of candidates that are coming forward and look forward to the work ahead for them and continuing to be engaged as a parent.
But you're not going anywhere yet.
No, yes, this is not goodbye, but I did want to address it now that it's public.
That's nice. Thank you, Candace. I'll go next. So today was our Foundation for Celine Area Schools monthly meeting. We take a month off in the summer. It was the official goodbye to Anne Hurst as our executive director, so wishing her well. And I hope to see her around town, and I know she's going to be continuing to volunteer. We welcome Stacy Rumpsa as the new executive director. Excellent, excellent choice hiring team. She is an amazing volunteer and parent in the district, and I look forward to supporting her and the rest of the team. And then we welcomed two new trustees. One was able to join us today, Julie Simon. The other will join us next time, Austria Lilly, and really looking forward to working with them as well. The Foundation for Celine Area Schools had their best year on record. Three hundred and eight thousand was the final number. That did include one large gift of one hundred thousand. Our sponsors are at thirty-four. So those are corporate sponsors that give back to our district, equalling eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, which is incredibly significant. A few dates that I know Stacy and Anne Hurst would want me to mention. Summer Fest, as Jenny said, is coming up this weekend. They will be at Henni Field from ten to two. Please stop by. As we talk about getting to a, quote, "normal" school year, one of the key tenants of that is community involvement, parents, guardians, and families and community members supporting the district and supporting the students. So swing by, and I'm sure they have lots of volunteer opportunities they can talk to you about. On September ninth, at the football game, they will do the patio, so you can stop by and get a little, get a little lush. And that's also our Chad Tough Orange Out night, coincidentally. So it's a great night to come out and support the Hornets. And then on October thirteenth, we're having the Fall Fundraiser here at Liberty Lunch and Conversation about all of our wonderful district building and teacher grants. So please mark your calendars, especially the trustees that are sitting up here, and hopefully some of our classroom ambassadors, or I forget what you called them, Kira. Maybe some of those folks can come, the Classroom Bond ambassadors, champions. That would be, that would be great. And then finally, Steve and I worked together to onboard Allison the other day and just talked a little bit about student showcase and setting those up for the year, as well as kind of going through the agenda so she didn't come in completely cold. And I knew she was going to soar, and I'm really, really glad that she's here. So again, welcome to her. Welcome. Any other trustee comments? Susan?
Yeah, so a couple of things on MASB. The budget, that was so long ago in July when we attended the budget update with MASB webinar. So I won't talk much about that because I'm on policy and not finance. I only catch part of it, and I'm like, "Yeah, that sounds good." So Thursday, I will be attending the MASB legal workshops. I'm super excited about that, touching on topics, you know, over the past, that have come up over the past year. And there's a panel on hot topics, so I can't wait to hear that. So, and then just a couple of things. I have been reappointed for a third year to the MASB Resolutions and Bylaws Committee. So I'm super excited about continuing doing that work. And then also the MASB Annual Leadership Conference coming up in October in Trevor City. The program is now available, and if you take a peek, you will see my name in it. So I'm presenting with two other trustees in other districts. The session title is LGBTQ plus School Board Members Talk Sex and Gender. Just a little description here. Join three of Michigan's LGBTQ plus School Board members as they delve into policies and practices that boards of educations can take to continually support their LGBTQ plus students. So I'm excited to be partnering with some other board members. And I know it's come up in webinars. People have questions about committees, like the SEAB or SEEB. And so that's come up just within the webinars. And so I think there's an interest in that, and especially, you know, things going on in the US and stuff. So, yeah, that is all.
Any other comments from trustees? All right. Moving on to Consent Agenda, the following are offered as part of Consent Agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. These items will not be read aloud, but will continue to be listed out individually in the minutes for this meeting. I'd like to please entertain a motion and move to authorize the file. Oh, I don't have to read it. I'm so used to reading it. I'd like to please entertain a motion to authorize approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Michael, thank you.
Support, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. It's always a habit to still read those. Item scheduled on our next agenda, Dr. Latch.
So we will do a deeper dive into the bond proposal and also another back-to-school update.
All right. This is our second opportunity for public comment. Betty, do we have any slips? All right, so I will acknowledge that there is no second public comment tonight. Our next meeting, the next meeting of the Board of Education, will be held here on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two at six thirty PM. I'd like to now please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting for August ninth, twenty-twenty-two at eight eighteen PM.
So moved, Miller.
Support, Jones.
Thank you, Candace. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned.